Good evening. And welcome to the West Orange Board of Education Public Board Meeting on Monday, May sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. I would like to thank all of you here in person and those watching from home for joining us tonight. I'd like to welcome my fellow board members as well as Mr. Moore, Ms. Flowers, and our student liaison, Leila Abanaj. Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll call?
Good evening, roll call. Dr. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Ifker?
Here.
Mr. Stevenson?
Here.
Ms. Vera?
Here.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Thank you. Notice of meeting. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests are discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board on January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. That said, notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and by email to the Star Ledger. That said, notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education and posted on the district website. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and may be broadcasted on local TV and the district's website at a future date. Please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
... of the United States of America. One nation, one nation, one nation. And we will be global, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. In consideration of the closed and public meeting of April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Any comments? Hearing none. Ms. Flowers, please take the roll.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Vera?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next up, good evening to our student liaison, Leila Abanaj. Would you please share your student liaison report with us?
Yes, on April twenty-fourth, the West Orange High School Winter Color Guard had an outstanding performance at Championships in Trenton and concluded their twentieth anniversary season. On May twenty-second, the Spring Choir had an amazing performance at West Orange High School and combined all the choirs at all grade levels. West Orange High School had an art show showcasing all the students' amazing art pieces, ranging from studying two D, two D and three D design arts and captivating fashion, photography, architecture, and digital design. Edison Middle School put on their production of Matilda, the Musical Junior on Friday, May third, and Saturday, May fourth. Liberty Middle School put on their production of Mean Girls Junior from April twenty-fifth to the twenty-seventh. Roosevelt Middle School put on their production of Once Upon a Mattress from April twenty, April eighteenth to the twentieth. From May thirteenth to May eighteenth, immerse yourself in live music, cultural displays, delicious food trucks, and family-friendly fun at the Love and Unity Fest. West Orange High School class of two thousand and twenty-four seniors came together in Tarnoff Gym for Decision Day last Friday to celebrate and show off their postgraduate plans. Our senior prom is May twenty-third at the Birchwood Manor at six P M., and tickets are now on sale for one hundred dollars.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, Mr. Moore, it is time for your report. Would you please share your superintendent's report with us?
Thank you, President Rock. Good evening. Tonight, in honor of Asian American Pacific Islander Month, we have a presentation being made by our students. At this time, I ask our Supervisor of Rural Languages, Mr. Felix Blata, to come to the microphone for introductions.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, the board, and to the public. My job at this point is very easy. It is to introduce one of our wonderful students, Ms. Venisha Janaki, to come up to the podium, please. She will be doing a presentation.
... in honor of AAPI Heritage Month. Good evening. My name is Venisha Janaki, and I'm a senior here at West Orange High School. I am also a steering committee member for the local community group, United Asian Voices of West Orange. Many of you may be familiar with the UAV in our advocacy work as well as our annual cultural celebrations like the Diwali and Lunar New Year Festival, where we center student voices and talents. Tonight, UAV is delighted to once again amplify the voices of students who will read poems by AAPI poets. The first student is Erin Gang. Erin is currently in third grade at Redwood Elementary School. She is of Chinese descent and speaks multiple languages. She's a native speaker of English and Mandarin Chinese, but also has basic proficiency in Spanish and Shengai dialect. Erin enjoys dancing and has passion for painting and doing art projects, and her dream is to become an artist.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for taking the time to join us tonight as we discuss important matters that impact our community. In the spirit of our discussion, I would like to share a poem written by Janet Wong. Janet Wong is the author of more than thirty books for children and teens and is the winner of the two thousand and twenty-one NCT E Award Award for Excellence in Poetry for Children, a lifetime achievement award that is one of the highest honors an American children's poet can receive. Janet Wong tries to live by the motto, "Be the good", which was the main reason that she quit her job as a lawyer. She couldn't think of anything more important than working with kids. Janet was born in Los Angeles and is of Chinese and Korean descent. The name of the poem is "You Can Do It Right Now". "You Can Do It Right Now" by Janet Wong, two thousand and twenty. You can shout out a march, you can quietly pray, you can read the news and share it today, you can send the mayor of your town a note, you can make a sign that tells people to vote, you can talk to your family, you can listen to friends. There are different ways to reach the same ends. To fight injustice to show that you care. You can do it right now from anywhere. Thank you for listening. Now I would like to introduce the next student. Jason Buffon Affay is a seventh-grade honor student at Liberty Middle School who enjoys playing the cello, basketball, and volleyball. He is third-generation Filipino-American and is the oldest of three boys. Jason finds joy in reading, gaming, and giving back to his community whenever he can. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming here today to share with our community. Today, I'll be reading a poem by a Filipino author known as Joseph O. Legaspi. Joseph O. Legaspi was born in the Philippines, and his family immigrated to California when he was twelve. The author of poetry collections Imago Threshold and several other chapter books. He received a poetry fellowship from the New York Foundation for the Arts and co-founded Kundiman, a nonprofit with the creative independent. Legaspi said, "Pursuing something creative leads to this amazing brotherhood and sisterhood and siblinghood with creative folks." That's the best thing about being a, sorry, being a creative, because I would say ninety percent of your friends are creative. They, in turn, bring so much beauty and language and sunlight and darkness and drama into your life. You feel alive all the time, having all these people around you, and I'm really thankful for it. And now, Departure by Joseph O. Legaspi. "We were not prepared for it, America. The land cut like a massive slab of steak. Our mother did not sit us down to explain, and nothing was said over the black coffee and rice soup at the mealtimes. My siblings and I approached our inevitable leaving with numb acceptance, as many do under martial law. Days prior to the date, things disappeared in the house, the display cabinet taken away by an aunt, the wedding gift China wears in it sold, except for the blue plates and swan-shaped bowls that would not survive the journey. The rice bin was given to a family friend, knives to Uncle Leo, school uniforms, cousins, roosters divided among the men, floral fabrics divided among the women, dried mangoes and stale squid candies for the neighborhood children. A twin bed transported upstairs for my sister staying to complete college. That late July morning, the jeepney arrived, as hired, a hell dominion over the blinding sky, a zephyr funneled through the narrowing streets of Manila. The steady procession of well-wishers in our house did not halt. My father was handing out pesos as if he were paying for our sage passage, surrounded by luggage and boxes as huge as baby elephants. We were given a dollar bill, our firsts, as the jeepney drove off to take us to the airport, leaving behind a throng of onlookers waving violently and a tearful older sister who, years later, would reenact this disappearing act. This fading scene of a rooster-lion road of this cockfighting banana-tree lush town speeding away, lost in the kinetic gray cement and dark smoke of exhaust." Thank you. And now to introduce our next student. The next student is Amrin Oshiro, who is a sophomore at West Orange High School. She has a year-round, she's a year-round soccer player and participates in the Asian Culture Club and ESL Club, all while maintaining good grades. AAPI Heritage Month is important to her because it honors and commemorates the achievements of Asian and Pacific Islanders. Being Thai, Japanese, and Peruvian representation is personal to her. Thank you.
Good evening, every, good evening, everyone. We Who Produce Pearls is a newly released picture book illustrated by Amanda Ping Bodhi Pakaya. Born in Atlanta, Amanda is a transdisciplinary artist, educator, and community builder, now based in Brooklyn, who amplifies marginalized voices. The daughter of Thai and Indonesian immigrants, Amanda's signature bright and bold palette in We Who Produce Pearls bring to the, bring to light the strength and power within us all, creating a mesmerizing, stunning, and magical masterpiece that proves how we can shape our pain and struggle into one of joy and power. Written by Joanna Ho, We Who Produce Pearls is an anthem that celebrates the richness and diversity within the Asian-American identity and serves as a reminder of our self-worth, our legacy, and most of all, our destiny. An anthem for Asia-America, We Who Produce Pearls. We who dream, mark time by the moon, a heavenly body containing multitudes, whose many faces mirror our own and shine light on our season of harvest, celebration, renewal. We who seek steer by the stars on voyages across the ocean, the traces of our travels flow in the veins of our exploration. We are the history of this land. We who withstand layer communities on top of communities in neighborhoods that sustain life and solidify the foundations of this nation. We who persist are the wealth and the riches of the world. We hold empires upon our backs and wear crowns covered in jewels. We are the water that coaxed spring shoots from the soil. We are the tracks that connected sea to shining sea. We are the gold that fed the dreams of a generation. We who shine have the power to define the legacies we leave. The truths we speak today pin themselves to the heavens and constellations that will guide the seekers of tomorrow. We who produce pearls wield our power with patience, drawing from the strength of ancestors who tattoo their wisdom on our souls. We have always risen up, stepped into power, shaped our space. We are children of the celestial. We catch the light and lead with brilliance so bright, we rechart the course of the world. Thank you. Now I'd like to turn the mic back to Venisha, who will offer closing remarks.
On behalf of the UAV, I'd like to thank Erin, Jason, and Amrin, who beautifully shared poems that amplify how unity, allyship, and being our authentic selves are essential to a sense of community and belonging. On that note, I'd like to also share what it's meant to me to have learned about Asian-American history and culture as a part of my West Orange curriculum, not just as part of AAPI Heritage Month and not just as part of the educational programs led by the UAV. Now that I'm about to graduate, I've been reflecting on my experiences as a student in this district. One classroom memory that perfectly encapsulates the pride and curiosity stirred in me is my history of race, class, gender, and ethnicity class, where my teachers, Mr. Evans and Mr. Edelstein, often tell us anecdotes of the experiences they have had when welcomed into different cultures, such as trying out new foods, events, and more. One that made me feel acknowledged in the class was their love of Indian weddings, and they are always curious to hear more about my perspective of issues impacting our society from my Indian-American culture. This is just the tip of the iceberg, though. Learning about other cultures opens the gate to learning about the history of their communities. As a result of the UAV's Diwali festivals, we have been able to invite others to experience Indian cultures so that they can have anecdotes of their own, but also we always educate our attendees on Indian-American history, bringing out a better understanding of our community. In our schools, learning about other cultures and history through curiosity that can be fueled in the classroom itself is the answer to true understanding. In order to make all communities feel welcome and safe in a town we call home, our future change-makers should be able to learn about multicultural perspectives in all of the communities that contributed to making their country what it is today, including the AAPI community. Thank you again to Superintendent Moore and the Board of Education members for once again allowing students to celebrate AAPI Heritage Month. Now I'd like to welcome Matthew Emanuel to the podium.
Good evening, everyone, and once again, congratulations to all the performers. My name is Matthew Emanuel, and I'm a junior here at West Orange High School. I'm also currently the president of Asian Culture Club, and on behalf of Asian Culture Club, I'd like to invite the West Orange community to join us in celebrating AAPI Heritage Month on Friday evening, May thirty-first, at the West Orange High School. Celebration supported by United Asian Voices will include cultural performances and arts and crafts activities. The event is free and open to the community, and please stay tuned for updates on, on, or follow Asian Culture Club's Instagram at Present the Asian, W O H S, and thank you so much.
Well, thank you once again to the students. One more round of applause. They've never failed to impress. Their dedication, passion to their culture, not only to their cultures, but also to learning other cultures is really what West Orange appreciates, we appreciate as a community. We do, as always, have ways to go. We are not perfect, but we do strive for that ultimate perfection in learning about others. but we do strive for that ultimate perfection in learning about others, appreciating diversity. Um, and, and I just want to mention, Matthew, he's, he's a junior. Uh, he also is taking Italian, has met the seal of bilinguacy requirements for the following year. When he graduates as, as a senior, he will graduate as officially trilingual. Uh, so congratulations, uh, I'm, uh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, bilingual, bilingual, Italian, and, and English. Uh, so thank you. I'd also like to touch upon some of the points made regarding, it's always wonderful to celebrate and recognize those months, those weeks, those days of the year. But more importantly, or arguably more importantly, it's important to recognize, celebrate, acknowledge, represent throughout the year in entirety. And thanks to the community, thanks to the board, thanks to our district administration, teachers, um, and ultimately the students, uh, the district is working for. And I like to speak to a little bit of the ways that we are trying to continue to grow and be more inclusive and more diverse in the curriculum and instruction. Um, what I'm going to mention does not capture it all, but I'd just like to give a, a brief update as to where we're at. Um, a small update as to where, where we currently are and what our visions are for the future. Uh, so again, my name is Felix Plata. I'm the supervisor of ESL and World Languages. Uh, and in recognition of Asian-American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Month, I would also like to, um, to, to, to describe, as I mentioned, some of the, uh, some of the acts that we've taken over the last several years. So over the last several years, as part of the district's curriculum revision process, there have been, there has been an intentional focus to develop and implement a curriculum that is inclusive and representative of our population, our, and our society as a whole, includes, incluses, inclusive of AAPI. So to begin the language art, uh, I'll speak a little bit about the language arts curriculum. Language arts curriculum has infused texts that either are authored by or demonstrate an API experience. Such texts include Round Is Is a Mooncake, A Book of Shapes by Rose Anthang, Front Desk by Kelly Yang, Long Walk to Water by Linda Sue Park, I Am Malala by Malala Yousufzai, and Life of Pi by Yan Martel. And again, that's just a few of the texts that we've infused incorporated into our ELA curriculum. Uh, in addition, moving over to the math, uh, in our grade two to five math program, we've included in each unit a focus on the lives of individuals and their unique contributions to our society, uh, using math or through math. These individuals come from diverse backgrounds, but yes, they also include our API community, so I mentioned them tonight. Now in social studies, a, a great deal of work has been done in our social studies department uh, and, and our curriculum, uh, to include the API mandates and beyond. So some of those, uh, some of that includes, at the elementary level, the social studies curriculum has designated specific units regarding cultural traditions and celebrating a broad range of cultures, including API in kindergarten, grade one, grade two, and grade three. Those units include sections of several diverse texts, including Grandfather's Journey by Alan Say, The Name Jar by Yang Suk Choi, and Chinese, Chinese New Year by Judith Jang Ho Cohen. Now, students at the secondary level study Asian immigration patterns to the United States during the 19th and 20th centuries, as well as the accomplishments and prejudice Asian Americans experience. And they study that in grades, uh, grade six, grade 10, and then, and grade 11. Now, those contexts or, or concepts are introduced at a grade, a low, a, a grade appropriate level, um, but we do address them, we do speak to them, and again, as always, we're looking to improve and grow uh, as a district through our curriculum. Uh, in visual and performing arts, as well as health and phys ed, there's been a commitment also to promoting cultural responsiveness, representation, and exposure to diverse people, concepts, music, and individuals through the exercise, music, and art lessons. Uh, some of, uh, just a couple of art lessons, of, of those lessons include the introduction of API Heritage Stars in the phys ed classes when, when, um, touching upon certain units in phys ed, such as Naomi Osaka, Troy Palamalu, Sean Akira Davis, and Yao Ming during their, uh, again, during their respective sports units. Now, in the high school, in the high school's theater, arts, and master scene study classes, the reading and performing of monologues and scenes from, from Quee Gweng's play, She Kills Monsters, is included. Now, our library science department also analyzes the collections at each school on an annual basis with a focus on diversity. The collections are updated to ensure that materials, materials are inclusive and provide support across all subject areas. Virtual, virtual book rooms are curated, reading lists, author visits, uh, and physical displays highlight the month and provide students and staff with additional resources which support the curriculum in all subject areas. Now, world languages, place of my, my heart. Um, so in world, world languages, the nature of our study is to study diverse cultures, languages, uh, and to develop globally competent, uh, multilingual students. Uh, so in what, in West Orange, we, we offer Chinese as a world language, beginning in sixth grade and offered through the high school. These classes focus on teaching the language and cultures of both the past and the present. This year, uh, our students, as was mentioned before, they learned about and recognized the Lunar, Lunar New Year tradition and celebrated during our Lunar New Year Gala in February, uh, which, with great support from United Asian Voices of West Orange. So once again, I thank you for your support as always. Uh, and in this event, students from across the district, from sixth grade on and up, organized and performed various aspects of the Asian cultures that celebrate the Lunar New Year. We partnered with, um, with local organizations and businesses for a wonderful event. So in closing today and this month, we as a district recognize and celebrate the contributions that the API community, uh, has, has brought to our society, uh, has shared with our society, and we strive to approve upon our vision of diversity, equity, access, and inclusion for these cultures, the Asian cultures, as well as cultures and groups throughout the school system. So thank you to the board, Mr. Superintendent, and to the community, to our administrators, to our teachers, and of course, to the Y of our district, our students. You are our future. You are what we do, what we, what we do. So thank you and continue your good work, and thank you very much.
Before we, before we move on the agenda, I just would like to, uh, did you want to come up? Okay. Before we move on the agenda, I just want to thank our students. Oh, sure. And if I can get a picture, would be nice with our students, with the board, if that's okay. Um, but I do want to say to West Orange, um, there's faculty back there. I know we've mentioned teachers that make a difference, and they do. Uh, but not just, uh, the teachers, but the makeup of our school, the diversity in our school, and the, and as you can see, the engine that could is our students. They're the reason why West Orange is a special community. And, um, I'm, I'll tell you what, students, I'm very lucky to get to be a superintendent of such a fine district, and you displayed that today with your presentation. So is that all right with you? Can we take a picture?
Board.
Roberts, David. I'll just give us a second, and then we'll move forward in the agenda. If I may point out, an item on the agenda that deserves some recognition, and that is the appointment of our Director of Special Services will be filled by Ms. Connie Salambino. Connie's been here a long time. Ms. Salambino once held the position not long ago when she graciously accepted the huge undertaking of implementing our special ed preschool program at the Betty Madalena Early Learning Center. Ladies and gentlemen, we are very fortunate that Ms. Salambino is eager to return to her former post. So at this time, ladies and gentlemen, please help me give a warm welcome back to Ms. Connie Salambino.
Thank you very much. I have to honestly say, going after that incredible presentation of our students is definitely a tough act to follow. We are so blessed to have students like that leading the way for us. I want to thank Mr. Moore and the board for this incredible opportunity. I welcome it with open arms as I enter, end my twentieth school year here in West Orange. But I would be remiss without thanking the entire Department of Student Support Services for the incredibly warm welcome back that everyone has given me. And working in line with Dawn Ribero, amazing individual, and looking forward to working again. With Kristen Goverty, you couldn't ask for a better team. But to echo what Mr. Moore said, and this is where I'll cry. My BMELC family has been one of the most incredible, life-altering experiences that I could ever have. When we started this preschool offsite, we had no idea where this journey was going to take us, and thanks to all of you and our families, we have built something incredible. And it will continue to grow and be something special. So for all of my preschool families, I am your forever preschool principal. Thank you. And again, I am grateful for this opportunity and for the ability that I have to continue to give back to this amazing school district.
Uh, Connie, did you want to take a picture with anyone special, with your flowers, or? Or are you just, uh, with the board? And me too, the board, and thanks. No, no. Okay. All right. At this time, I will offer the, uh, final budget presentation. So, um, some of this presentation, if you remember the original presentation, you've seen a lot of these slides before. We will, of course, get to the slides where, um, positions are cut. But before that, just to remind everyone, thirteen schools, there's our enrollment at six thousand. As you can see, you can look at your school, see where enrollment lies. And again, we'll go over our budgetary goals to continue to provide funding to maintain a safe environment in all buildings, increase the support of student achievement while optimizing district spending, and review and evaluate district expenditures to identify opportunities for efficiencies and financial savings. That, this slide, the revenue comparison shows where the change occurred, where we received a deficit, a cut in state aid. And just to say how the budget was impacted, it was a decrease in state aid coupled with annually increases in expenditures that created a substantial budget deficit. That some of those expenditures are your, just your natural gas, electric, um, raises and things that went up. And you can see, and I don't know if it's quite clear, but you can see the expenditure columns where they, where we sit, where we have our different areas in which we spend. Uh, and you can see, uh, where we, um, have increased, and the increases are in the far, far column, as you can see. So for instance, salaries are up a million six hundred thousand, and benefits are somewhere at two million. So, the district-wide cuts. Well, how we balance the budget, we made cuts in supplies and equipment. We've cut our outsourced contracting services. We had to cut overtime, our substitute custodial cleaning services, which some of that was outsourced as well. We renewed, renewed, we renegotiated our healthcare benefit plan so that we can realize some savings. But we had about twenty-four district-wide staff reductions. Most of it was taken by retirements, resignations, not being replaced. Some non-renewals. And how we will, um, work on those holes were through transfers to fill some open positions. So here's a list of the reductions. A reduction spanned from one preschool principal, supervisor of technology engineering position, one librarian position, one technology position, six high school teaching positions, which varied between math, English, and science, one multilingual learner teaching position, two academic support teaching positions, two career education middle school teaching position, one world language teaching position, one central office administrative assistant position, one high school clerical aid position, one special education teaching position, three elementary school teaching positions, and two middle school phys ed teaching positions. So there's the general fund, and there's where our tax levy increased at the four million two hundred mark. And the impact to the taxpayers of West Orange would come in at about two point seven seven. Here's our budget approval timeline. By March eighteenth, which we did, the preliminary budget presentation to the community was submitted to the county for review. April twenty-fourth, the county approved approval of the budget. By May sixth, today, the public hearing for adoption of the final budget. Okay, thank you, and, uh, I know there'll be questions, but that would conclude the presentation of the budget. Board, you can return back to the days.
So before we move on to the remainder of Mr. Moore's report, just want to open it up to the board if they have any questions about the budget presentation. We'll have time for commentary later. If there's any questions, we'll take those now. Okay, then thank you, Mr. Moore. Finish up with the last item.
Our HIB report for the month. At this time, I present the HIB bullying report. Since our last board meeting, we've had two HIB investigations. I reviewed and summary, and I reviewed the summary of the both investigations and one was founded, the other was not. I concur with the findings of the anti-bullying specialists. Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And thank you to the students and Mr. Plata for the other presentation. That was terrific. It's always great to hear our students perform. From the rest of the board, do we have any committee reports?
No report.
All right, then I'll move on to my board president's report, which will consist of okay, two items. So first, and Leila mentioned this before, the district is promoting a week of love and unity, May 13th through the 18th. Where each day highlights a different event for our students to participate in to promote love, unity and kindness. Monday is Be a Hero. Students can wear a superhero t-shirt. Tuesday is Dress in Tie-Dye. Wednesday is Unique Day, Spreading Cultural Diversity. Thursday is Pyjama Day. Friday is School Spirit Day. The overarching message is everyone belongs and should feel included. Big thanks to Carl Brister, founder of Love and Unity, and our Director of Fine Arts, Luke Quai-Cliato, for bringing this program to our district. And second, I wanted to again speak a little bit about the state aid situation, just to add some context to Mr. Moore's budget presentation. Spoke about this at the last meeting, so some of you may have heard this before. But for anybody that wasn't here last meeting or anybody at home that's joining us, right, it came as a shock to us and to many others that when we received news that we were losing $700,000 in state funding. Initially, we're all kind of confused about why that was. And so after learning some more about how the state funding formula works, I wanted to share with everyone here, just so you understand a little bit more about how we got to today and then what this means for the future and add some context to this year's budget. So the state funding formula, we think about funding as one number, but it really comes in kind of four big buckets. One of those, which we'll talk about last, is equalization aid. The other three are special ed, categorical aid, transportation aid and security aid. Those three are pretty simple. There's a number, there's a formula, but essentially if your enrollment goes up, they go up. And also, if you look over the last few years, those were not funded at 100%. So for the last seven years, the state has slowly been increasing those three buckets of aid. And so coming into this school year before the aid figures were released, we expected that to go up at least a few million dollars, some amount. For context, that's about a third of our state funding. It's about $10 million last year. The bigger portion is equalization aid, which was $23 million last year. And that is essentially what you could call need-based aid for school districts. So the promise of CIFRA, the School Funding Reform Act, is that if the district collects and puts up its fair share, what the state thinks that we can collect through property taxes, the state will then fill in the rest of our adequacy budget, what they think it costs to educate our kids, so to help us fill out our budget. We historically have done that. We've collected our fair share. But the problem comes in how that's calculated. So the equalization aid is essentially the difference between two numbers. The adequacy budget is a number where the state says, based on a big formula, this is how much we think it should cost to educate all the kids in West Orange. It's X. And then the local fair share they calculate is Y. That difference is what we get in equalization aid. Last year, again, that was $23 million. Now, out of those four buckets of aid, what happened is that equalization aid went down $3.5 million. The other three, special ed, transportation and security, went up or should have gone up 2.8. So the net, what we see is our budget went down $700,000, which doesn't sound like a whole lot until you take into account that we're expecting about $3 million in those other buckets of aids. There's kind of more money that we were expecting that got pulled away. The reason why that equalization aid went down is because of the way those two numbers are calculated. So the adequacy budget essentially goes up for two reasons. One is enrollment. Enrollment went up slightly, so it went up a little bit because of that. The other is because of inflation. So the state calculates inflation costs and what the kind of normal cost of education increases by. And last year was about 6%. So if you kept everything the same, it would take about 6% more money to fund the exact same program, same position, same everything without changing anything. In actual dollars, our adequacy budget increased $9 million. That's what the state calculated to say. It would take an extra $9 million, give or take, to keep everything exactly the same. Now, if our local fair share kind of went up at the same rate, that wouldn't be a big deal. But instead, our local fair share went up 12.6 million. And again, the difference between the budget and the local fair share is your aid. So if the budget goes up this, and then the local fair share goes up this, suddenly that difference is smaller. And that's where we lost the funding. The reason for that is the way that the local fair share is calculated, which is based on two numbers. You start with really simple thing and you got to dig into this bottomless pit to try to figure out what's going on. That local fair share is calculated based on the equalized valuation of property in town, which apparently went up 7.9%, or about half a billion dollars. And then the total income of everybody that lives in West Orange, which went up 15.7%, or about $400 million. Now, on paper, what the state is telling us is that suddenly we're rich. I don't really feel that way. I don't know about you guys. But on paper, we have a lot of money that we should be able to collect. And if that were true, we wouldn't need as much aid. The problem is, all that money is out there on paper, but we can't collect that. But in the budget presentation, Hayden indicated we would raise the tax levy 2.77%. That's essentially all that we're allowed to collect. That comes to about $4 million. The increase, again, if you keep everything the same, is roughly $9 million. That's kind of a statewide average. So if you look at our budget, it could be a little bit different, but that's, you know, a big gap there. And so essentially, the problem that we have today is that because that income and local fair share went up, our equalization aid went down. And now we're trying to fill in what the state did not give us. And so while Hayden presented a slate of some cuts to staff, and we prefer not to make any of those cuts, the kind of reality is that without that money from the state, that's the only way to balance this budget. The other kind of piece looking forward is that that local fair share is somewhat random. Where we look across the state, some places went up, some went down. There's really no way to tell what's going to happen next year. Could be this is a blip, the next year looks much better. It could be that this is not a blip and next year looks worse. And part of that's going to depend upon how the state acts over the next year, whether they revise this formula and how the equalized valuation and how the district income change between now and then. So that's a little bit of context. We'll comment more on the budget itself when we get to that in the agenda later. But coupled with Hayden's presentation, thought it's important for us all to understand how that's calculated and how we got to this point where we're essentially trying to fill in money that the state should have given us and that we expected to come in way back in January. So with that, would conclude my report and we will move on to public comment. We will have questions from the public on agenda items only. Any community member who would like to make comments or ask questions, please come to the podium at this time. Please say your name and home address for the record, then begin your comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We have any members of the public here in the audience tonight wish to make a public comment.
Lisa Tuzo, 15 Carter Road. During the April 15th Board of Ed meeting, the necessity for sacrifices was emphasized. Since my last interaction with the board, I've observed a posting of 32 instructional and non-instructional job postings and the renewal of non-tenured teachers despite the information from the budget presentation to the contrary. Conversations with other departments reveal no staff reductions. While some positions have been consolidated, there remains untapped potential for reduction where the impact of school-based staff is not as keenly felt. Undoubtedly, you've seen emails and feedback echoing those concerns about eliminating the library position that's not aligned with the best interest of our students. As principal, Mr. Moore can attest to the transformative power of a robust library program, having witnessed it firsthand. Let's examine the cost-effectiveness of this decision. While the budgetary impact may seem significant, the cost broken down per student is $11.60 a student. Let that thing sink in. $11.60. The effectiveness of our program and equitable access, excuse me, access to students are at risk. Our students have diverse needs. Some thrive in sports, others in the arts. Many rely on library resources. Eliminating the library position aligns with more with districts that are struggling to provide quality education. Have we reached that spot yet? Significant savings can be achieved by leveraging the over nearly 1,000 educators for professional development instead of outsourcing to an expensive external providers to the tune of $709,000, which has doubled from the last school year. These outside sources yield limited instructional value. Additionally, we must address the instances of wasteful spending such as replacing recently installed overhead protectors due to malfunctions. Reevaluate the online tutoring app Paper, which fails to meet student needs because the online tutors do not know the material and leave the students without answers to their queries. Also, the lime item for facilities, acquisition and construction services for $10.1 million. We are a school district, not a construction company. If we can't afford $10.1 million, don't spend it this year. This is not a budget that reflects dire straits, but one to borrow from sound educational practices and to one that has not been clearly defined. Our schools are integral to our community identity and directly influence property values. Neglecting school library funding jeopardize our students' children, our children's future, perpetuates information poverty and compounds existing learning disparities. Consider the students who lack transportation to the public library. For them, our school libraries represent the only access to resources. We must remain accessible to all students, particularly those without resources from home.
I'm going to ask you to please wrap it up. Your time is expired.
Presenting budgets without adequate library school staffing undermines fiscal responsibilities. As educators, we engage with every student, serving as its teachers and instructors.
Hi, my name is Molly Eisen. I live at 242 Gregory Avenue and I'm a special education ELA teacher at Edison. And I just wanted to kind of piggyback off of what Ms. Tuzo said, especially about the professional development. So we've been hearing the deficit is $700,000 and according, and again, I'm no math teacher. My students will definitely tell you that. The, in the budget, it's about $700. And as someone who has sat through a lot of PD this year with my colleagues, we often found it to, quite frankly, be a waste of time and money. You know, we were trained on the new New Jersey learning standards, which my department has been talking about for the past two years. So for former teachers who kept saying, oh, I'm just like you. I'm in the classroom. No, you're not. You haven't been teaching for five years because, you know, we teachers do our research. So we research these people who are talking to us. Was quite frustrating. And it just boggles my mind that, you know, we have this deficit. You're spending basically the deficit on PD, but you have amazing teachers in West Orange who are willing to do the PD for a lot less. So it really seems like that could be a way to help solve the problem as well. And especially save our library media specialist jobs. You know, I'm a special ed teacher. My students are reluctant readers and the LMC is a happy place for them. And the thought of, you know, not having Ms. Bocheese there full-time next year is honestly devastating, not just to the staff, but to the students. And knowing my kids going to Liberty and Roosevelt are not going to have that wonderful experience they have with Ms. Bocheese is incredibly disappointing. So just, you know, think about what could the $700,000 be better spent on? Someone who hasn't been in the classroom in years lecturing us and admittedly saying, I don't know, when we ask them questions or doing what's right by our kids.
Good evening. My name is Jessica DeChico. I live at 69 Kirk Street. I'm here in support of the school library media specialist positions in West Orange. I believe strongly that each school should have a full-time certified media specialist leading their library program. I'm a homeowner in West Orange. I'm a member of the New Jersey Association of School Librarians. And perhaps most importantly here, I'm a parent of two Redwood Elementary School students. And I've seen the vital role that librarians are playing in their lives. My children look forward to going, every week, going to the library with Ms. Boyd and learning about multicultural lessons as well as developing their love of reading and literature. The guidance of these highly qualified professional media specialists in our district is essential for all of our students. I had the unique experience, having completed my Masters of Information at Rutgers recently. During my graduate studies, I was able to intern with Ms. Bocheese at the middle school at Edison. And I could witness firsthand with both my, you know, my student hat and my parent hat on, the level of dedication and care and professionalism that Ms. Bocheese and her colleagues bring every day. And I don't think, so and in addition, so as our children grow older, my children will be going into middle school soon. The media specialists will continue to be essential in teaching them how to be critical consumers of information. We have an overwhelming media landscape and they'll need guidance in evaluating sources and avoiding like fake news and falling for things that are coming at them in this world. So these skills, the media literacy skills are essential for our children to become responsible citizens of our global community. These media specialists are on the front lines delivering these lessons every day. So school libraries are not only places to do research and explore carefully curated literature. Again, I've chosen to show our students not only mirrors of their own experiences, but windows into the lives of others and really to help them open up their worlds. But for many students, they're safe spaces in difficult times. And especially during awkward teenage, pre-teen teenage years, those safe spaces are, these havens are essential. And limiting the times that our libraries are available with our school librarians, it worries me. So cutting the number of librarians for the middle schools will make it impossible for the remaining media specialists to deliver the same high level of service that our students get now. And all of the school communities in all three schools will suffer from this. So thank you for attention. I understand you have difficult decisions to make. But I implore that you recognize the essential role of these media specialists in our educational landscape and act accordingly. Thank you.
Patti, pardon me. Good evening. My name is Patty Richardson and I am an eighth grade ELA teacher at Liberty Middle School. When I saw the number of one library media specialist position being omitted, I have to tell you, I am heartbroken. I pride myself on doing a really good job and I work really hard and so do my colleagues. And in order to do that, I tried to create an environment that is rigorous for my students. My students read every day. They write every day. We take the first 10 minutes of class. They get to choose the book that they want to read and they get to respond to those books. I cannot begin to tell you the amount of reading that my students have done this year. Without Mrs. Tuzo in our library, these students will not have the access to these books that they have had all this year. If we want rigor in our classrooms, how can we how can we provide that if we don't have the resources? I'm here to speak on behalf of those students who are not the athletes where all sorts of money is allocated for them to be successful. There's money allocated for kids in theater and musical programs. But for our students to be successful and feel like they have a, have some value, these books enable them to do that. What about the kid who is struggling, who needs to be able to identify with a character in a book? We're taking that away from them because they won't have access to these libraries. The middle school is the most, most important time where we really need to guide our children. They are trying to figure out who they are. Why should we take away the one thing that is going to give them some semblance of security? Please, I don't envy your position. It's the worst. But I'm sure you can find some way to move money and keep our library media specialist at our building so that I and my colleagues can continue to do the good work that we do every day. It's Teacher Appreciation Week. The best gift you could give me and the rest of my colleagues is to keep my library media specialist in my building. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Josh Goldfarb. And I'm an eighth grade teacher at Roosevelt. I'm a lifelong West Orange resident, taxpayer, and habitual voter. I am speaking to you about the upcoming change of the health benefits for employees of West Orange schools. For the record, the board was informed of the shift proposal in February, but we were not informed until the April meeting. Why were we not informed of this possible change in March? Furthermore, we did not receive any details about this change until last week. That's when we received the difference. That's quite a long time from when the proposal came out. This is a change that impacts our health and that of our families. This change is set to take effect on July 1st, giving us and the NJEA very little time to conduct a thorough analysis of this new plan. This change is being done because of the financial shortfall, which I understand. But it is upsetting to me that the personal, the personnel cuts and healthcare changes seem to be the main solutions put forward by the board to save this money. The side-by-side comparison of our current and the proposed plans are identical, mainly identical. So why is this new plan less expensive? I suspect the savings comes from the prescription plan. We will be switching from Benicard to Express Scripts, a company that the Better Business Administration is, quote unquote, advising consumers to use caution when considering doing business with Express Scripts. Better Business Bureau has received a pattern of consumer complaints alleging delays or failure to ship correct prescriptions or medications, failure to accept returns or medications which were shipped in error, failure to issue refunds, debiting credit or credit debit or credit cards for prescriptions not shipped and poor customer service, end quote. Here are some reviews of this company. "My dad's medication was moved from escripts to this pharmacy. No one told us, and they run you in circles and sit on medication for months. If someone needs a cancer med, the patient may die before they get it all." "This company doesn't care about people, only the bottom dollar. They wouldn't approve a medicine for me that I'd been on for over a year. I wouldn't have this company if I had any choice in the matter." These are not anonymous. They do have names and addresses attached to them. And these are all from April of this year. "I cannot get my prescription from Express Scripts, and I can't get any refill from my local pharmacy because Express Scripts is saying my order was shipped when the site clearly shows it was not. The script was sent over a week ago, and I got no notice that there would be any delays in filling it. Now I'm out of meds. No one will help me." That's from Christie in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. That was April 18th. I could go on and on. There are literally thousands of similar reviews about Express Scripts. These reviews are not outliers for this company. They are the norm for Express Scripts. I recognize that money is an issue. As a taxpayer, I appreciate that every dollar needs to be spent responsibly. But the response, but the reality is that we are scared. And many of us feel that our health may be compromised by this switch. I respectfully ask that you pause the implementation of this plan until teachers and the union have had an appropriate amount of time to analyze it thoroughly. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Sharon Ortiz, Lowell Avenue, and 18-year teacher at the high school. I appreciate the cost-saving measures of the board in order to meet our recent shortfall. I do have to join in with the gentleman that just spoke, however, is we did compare the insurance, and it appears to be on paper equal. What we haven't been given at this point are the in-network doctors. So people need to know whether or not their doctors are actually in the plan to know if it's actually equal and to have a look at what the approved drugs would be. I, I also heard a lot of talk about the switch from Benicard to Express Scripts. Express Scripts does enjoy a very bad reputation. So I would implore the board to take another look at them as our carrier for prescriptions. He was correct in saying that 91% of the people that have that plan, they gave them a one-star rating. And this is out of thousands of ratings. So it's, it on surface seems to be quite inferior. Also, there are multiple lawsuits going on in different states for price fixing and collusion with pharmaceuticals and all kinds of things going on with that particular company. So that might bear a second look, just to make sure that, in addition to the fact that they're not delivering people's prescriptions, we don't get involved in the class action suit as well. Again, I thank you. Thank you, thank you for the cost-saving measures. Oh, I just have one more thing, one more thing, Ms. and Board, if you'll indulge me. I, I saw on the slide that we were trying to cut back on overtime, particularly with maintenance. So to that end, are we looking for a permanent solution, again, for the Betty Madalena Center so that we are not paying so much overtime to the maintenance guys going on Friday nights and break everything down for the church and then come back again, again on Sunday, also overtime, and put everything back up again? So is that something that we can look at as a cost-saving measure? That in addition to the rent? Thank you so much.
Hey, my name is Jessica Harrell, and I live at 4 Gavin Road. I have a second grader and a third grader at St. Cloud. And I am an educator by trade. I've been a teacher, principal, and now I work for, oh, district. Now I work for a nonprofit that does professional development. And we hear so often like how hard the work of the board is. I'm telling you, I know, because I've seen it and lived it. And it's also one of the hardest times to be a teacher ever. Like, ever. And the work that I'm doing at my kid's school, all I hear from the teachers is how hard it is. My kids are at one of the best schools I can ever have been in. I worked in Newark, Chicago, New York City, and Denver, and I've seen the struggles of teachers. We shouldn't have that here. We have the resources. What I'm hearing is, uh, how do we save money? And one answer is get rid of teachers. But another question we could be asking is, how do we keep the really good ones? One of the best teachers that I have ever seen in 20 years in education has resigned from St. Cloud. I don't know entirely why. But somebody should be meeting with her and saying, what do you need that we can keep you with our kids? My son has a ton of needs. He is an incredible kid who has absolutely been able to be himself in her room. And the conversations around professional development and all the things, it's really hard. And we have to keep asking why. One of the other things that I want to really lift up is the continued use of the Fuentes and Pennell assessments in our schools. They are not evidence-based. And yet, our teachers are spending time using these assessments with our kids. So we're training teachers to use useless assessments instead of asking our teachers, what do you need and how can we help? Being active in the PTA and a leader in the Diversity Council at St. Cloud, we try really hard to do that from the bottom up. And it sounds like a really good opportunity to have some office hours with teachers and to ask what they need because they are our biggest asset in this district. And I know that you know that because you wouldn't want to sit on a board unless you, you know, like, if that wasn't a thing you knew, you wouldn't want to be there. So while we're cutting costs, we need to also be advocates for the people who are on the ground doing a job that very few can do. Last plug, completely separate. As part of Love and Unity, St. Cloud is hosting 27 local children's authors on the Blacktop on May 14th from 4:30 to 6:00. And we would absolutely love for all of the elementary schools to join us in that, and we extend that invitation. Thanks.
Or is there anyone else for, sorry, anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, public comment is closed. Mr. Moore, would you like to respond to some of the comments that were made or questions?
Yeah. Okay. There's a few things I wrote down that I think is worthy of pondering, and we will ponder a little bit more. But I just want to first come to an understanding that the transparency that, that we are facing a financial deficit is not like, you know, that's real. And going into next year, you know, you need to have some funds for emergencies. And as I, as we would not be in this position, nor would I want to take any job from anyone or any position, nor do I want to do a lot with the little. However, that's the reality. This is, you say you envy, and I get that you envy, but I'm in the reality of it. And decisions, no matter if we took anyone's position here, I would say that it's all worth the same. It's all the same. It's worth it. And it is a deficit to our kids. It's called a sacrifice. The taxpayer in West Orange, I'm one of them, but the taxpayer in West Orange, yes, I don't, I, I have to pay. Taxes are high here. We want to pay. But they're just so high, we can take the tax levy. We do, as a board, have to be conscious of that as we want to keep our students coming to us. We want to make our community affordable. And at the same time, there is no job one over the other in terms of position. Forgive me if we're, if you think I'm speaking out of context when it comes to librarians, because I understand how important they are. That's not it. But the math teacher is, the ESL teacher is. They're all important positions. There's no doubt about that. So sacrifices in a deficit hurt everyone, not just some. So yes, you're gonna hurt, but so will I making that decision. But so will you as workers, because we're at a fiscal deficit. In terms of the healthcare, we, when we first looked at the budget, the number of jobs that we had to look at was somewhere in the 40s. And we were able to cut that down tremendously through retirement, through resignations, through different things. That wasn't easy because we had to find the money. And yes, we made an attempt. We will look at that. We gave it to the board. And unfortunately, we didn't get to that in a timely way to get to that point. It was something we thought of because we were desperately trying to figure out how to cut, not make sure we don't cut that many jobs. So we did look at it. And I take both Josh and Sharon's point. We'll write it down. We'll call the health benefit people and see, because we're not out to hurt people. We're, we want to make sure that we can do it. But we want to keep jobs. And if we're to, and if we stayed with it, or if we keep that, then there may be more positions lost, and we don't want to do that. That's just the reality to it with the healthcare. But we will look at it. Again, we will look at it. Are we asking our student teachers? And I thank you, Jessica, for bringing that up. They do work hard. We've always been a hard-working group. I was just there a year ago with them. I was on that side. I understand, and we do. We're a caring community. We're caring educators, those educators. And the reason they're advocating for the librarians is because they're caring, and they want the best for the kids. That's not denied. I understand that. Unfortunately, even at our best, there comes moments where we're at a point where we have to do something different. And that's where we are. I don't want people to walk away angry and thinking that none of this is pondered. You don't care. You've done this. No one. No, we tried to do it with the least, the least hurt in terms of employment. Is there movement that has to be made? Yes. Do people have to schedule differently? Perhaps. Do you have to do a little bit more? Classroom's going to be increased? Yeah, they are. I do think that I took the point on PD. I like feedback from the teachers, and I think that that has been expressed and more feedback has come since I've seen ever in this district from teachers to central office. So we have to build upon that. This is our fir-, this is my first year, our first year working like that. But if you didn't like PD, or if PD doesn't seem to be working and teachers feel they can do a better job of delivering that PD, I love that idea. I don't hate that idea because I think we have the people that can work that idea. I'm not against it. But I do think, though, with respect to people that did bring us the PD in our district that work with us as our colleagues, it would take a meeting, and it'll take a little time to show and propose the idea from our teachers to people that handle the PD portion of our district so that they get a chance to review it, see if there's certain things they, they need, see if we need to call in, you know, experts to help us with areas that we may not be able to plug the holes in. But it isn't lost your words. And some of those ideas are good ones. We'll jot those down. We'll take those into consideration. But a lot of that is going to be moving forward. That's what you have to understand. A lot of that is going to be moving forward. We will utilize those ideas. We will try to make some of these things happen. I cannot promise you that the next budget won't be tough again. This was unprecedented for us here at West Orange. I wouldn't ask for that in my first year, that's for sure. But it's here. But going forward, I couldn't, I don't know what to expect. I'm not sure if the trend continues. And if it does, then we will have to take a look at that. Do I want to decimate any of our programs? None. And that includes the library. It is important. It is part of who we are. No, we're a school. We believe in literacy. That's not where this is going. But it is a shared responsibility amongst us all in a community such as for the board and you as staff that we will share in this sacrifice. There's no question about that. So I am sorry that it hasn't been the perfect final budget. I do apologize for that. And hopefully, I'm hoping that our next go-around with the budget, we have realized some money. I'm hoping that our state aid will come back to some degree. But know that what you've expressed, I have not only listened to, but I've employed some of it early on. And what you said today, I've jotted down, and we'll go back and take a look at it. So I just want you to know that you're heard. I'm not sure that I'm going to land on perfect for you, but I will give you a good effort, and I will try to minimize as much damage as I possibly can in terms of leading us through this deficit. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I'll save budget related comments for later when we get to, to that motion on the agenda. Uh, I just wanted to briefly touch on the healthcare piece since there were some questions, um, and I can perhaps provide a little clarity on that. So on as Mr. Moore said, the, the estimate that we got, the renewal rate we got from Aetna and Benicard was astronomical and, and simply, but we could not afford that in our budget. Uh, Benicard was going to go up about 30%, which was the current prescription provider. Um, the shift proposal that we went with maintains the same schedule of benefits. So like you, you said on paper, uh, it is exactly the same. And so you may think, so how is something the same going to be cheaper? Uh, what's different about the shift from what we had previously is that it's a pooled insurance fund. So you can, in New Jersey, as a, uh, uh, school district, essentially three ways that you can handle insurance. One is to go directly to a health insurance firm. So that's what we did before. We went to Aetna, we went to Benicard, signed a contract and they looked at our employees and said, based on everybody here, here's your risk pool and here's your rate. And that it can go up and down based on what happens to the people that work here in West Orange and just that tiny pool. Uh, the other thing you can do is self-insure where we essentially do that ourselves. We pay out claims, we see how much it costs and then we hope that claims are low enough that our, our rates don't go up. Uh, the good thing about a pooled insurance fund like the shift, the other option being the school employees' health benefits program is instead of just looking at our district, it spreads the risk across all the districts in that fund. So the shift is a group of other school districts throughout the state. It is a select group. You cannot just, uh, join because you want to, like the school employees' health benefits plan. So, so they screen districts essentially coming in based on their risk pool. So if a district has a lot of claims in the previous year, they don't let them in. It, it, it's a great thing to get into because it means that we're now going to be spreading our risk across other districts that are paying lower rates and we're going to get to kind of spread that around. Uh, it really sucks for the people that can't get in because they're stuck paying higher rates based on the experience of their employees in their district. Um, so, so in that sense, it is, you know, kind of too good to be true and that it's the same thing for cheaper. Now the, the, the network, uh, Ms. Ortiz had asked about, just to be clear, it is the same Aetna network. So there is no difference in who is an in-networker or out-of-network doctor. So there is no concern about that. I know there's always concerns about healthcare. It is a very private thing and people are always worried when they hear healthcare is changing. What, what does that mean for me? Uh, the one difference is that it is a different pharmacy benefit manager, uh, like was mentioned, Express Scripts is the pharmacy benefit manager that works with the shift. Now, when you talk about healthcare, right, a pharmacy benefit manager works the plan that is provided for them. So if you look across the country or across the state, there can be any number of permutations of the plan that they provide. So the experience of an individual customer may, it may be that provider or maybe the plan that they have with them. Uh, now the plan again is going to be the same. It, it is our hope that the, the service you get from them will be the same as well. If it is not, I, I would encourage you to reach out to Brown and Brown because they're here to help you and definitely to reach out to Ms. Flowers so that the administration knows, uh, if there are issues with that piece of it, the administration of the plan, we absolutely want to know so that we can address that, uh, because there should not be. I, I, and again, I know there's hesitation. There's always fear around it. Uh, but this is, there were a lot of options that we looked at. Some would save us more money, uh, but as a board, we felt that they would not deliver adequate care because they would either be a subpar network or a subpar provider. Uh, and this is what we settled on as the option that would save us enough money to balance this budget, reduce and mitigate our risk moving forward and have the least amount of disruption for employees because they maintain the same at the network. Um, so with that, yes, Mr. Stevens.
Just, uh, to suffix that and to add some context for the community of West Orange. Of the more than 500 school districts in the state, do you know the number or the percentage of those school districts that are in the shift plan?
I don't have it off the top of my head.
I mean, but I'm saying, I, I'm asking the question to, uh, make it clear to the community that we're not doing something that's outlier.
Yes.
That there are significant number of school districts who, beginning July 1, were entering into a plan that, um, a good percentage of school districts in the state of New Jersey are enrolled in. I think that's important context for the community that, uh, this superintendent has not recommended something to the board that is outlier to, um, our health insurance plans, given that it is a, is a state plan that is utilized by many districts throughout the state. I would also, uh, I know we are somewhat breaking with our protocols here, but I think there are a couple of points that it's important to mention. Uh, one of the, uh, individuals at the podium mentioned that, that there's a $700,000 deficit. I'm only doing this because, um, soundbites can't drive conversations and the reality is, is that we're not dealing with a $700,000 budget deficit. We're dealing with a $700,000, um, cut to state aid. And that $700,000 cut to state aid is down from a $34 million, uh, in state aid that we received the previous year. And so the reality is the swing in state aid exceeds $35 million. And I think that this superintendent, uh, the business administrator and their, uh, associated staff, uh, in my estimation, have surgically proposed some cuts to maintain a level of quality education, maintain jobs. And for those that say, and I'm not speaking specifically to those that spoke at the podium, but anyone that says they don't envy the superintendent's role, the reality is that this superintendent, like superintendents across the country have three major constituencies. Students, employees and taxpayers. And the reality is, is that, um, as a taxpayer who serves on a board of education, the priority always has to be the delivery of high-quality education to our students. And I think that the superintendent, the business administrator and those that work to, um, preserve jobs under the presumption that it serves children in our community have done, um, I think a more than sufficient job of protecting high-quality education, or at least the presumption that the maintenance of jobs in turn means that there will be a adequate delivery of high-quality education instruction to our students, that there'll be minimal disruption to that. I don't get into the specifics of the individual cuts. That is for the administration to do that, but it is not, uh, to, to suggest that there's a $700,000 cut to the budget, uh, is out of context. This district had a $35 million swing in money that it did, that we anticipated to receive that was not received. And so anything to further develop, uh, the delivery of curriculum instruction or services to the community through our schools was, uh, exponentially affected. So the number is not 700,000. I think it's important to have that context for the community. So anything aspirational that the district wanted to do, anything aspirational was not in this budget. Again, these decisions are not easy decisions, but I just want to again reemphasize that we're looking at $35 million, not $700,000. And although it was not, um, very visible on the slide, Mr. Moore alluded to it in his comments, uh, which maybe there, there should be this kind of an implicit way. Year over year, there are structural deficits that school districts, uh, face. We had a nearly $2 million increase in salaries alone. A increase to health benefits. So year over year, the district faces structural deficits that at least in my tenure on the board, and as I looked previous to my tenure, that was often, uh, mitigated by state aid. That mitigation did not occur, wasn't even flat, cut by 700,000. And so, um, we're somewhat relieved because what we feared was going to be much worse is less worse than what we initially anticipated when we got that shocking news that we weren't getting the 30 or 35 million dollars that we had been getting year over year for the last few years, that not only were we not getting $30 million, they were telling us to find another $700,000. I think the community has to understand and recognize that because that's an important number to understand.
All right. We have other budget related comments. When asked the board to save them for when we get to the motion on the budget, but, but thank you. Yeah.
I only, I only made that comment because it was made during this public commentary time. I didn't want, didn't want it to be lost on those and panel here today.
Understood, Mr. Stevens. Thank you. All right. Uh, with that, we will move on to our resolutions. Uh, we will start with, uh, may I have a motion to approve the personnel items, A1 through A7?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Uh, I want to congratulate the following retirees. Cheryl Butler, our director of school counseling for her 13 years of service. Colleen Grandinetti, a learning disabilities teacher counseling for her 33 years of service. Diane Talman, a second grade teacher at Washington Elementary for her 25 years of service and Gladys Exum, a part-time bus monitor for her service. Uh, thank you for your service to West Orange students and our school community. Best wishes to you all as you join the club where every day is Saturday. Now, is there any discussion on personnel? All right, seeing none. Ms. Flowers, please take the role.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Vera?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next, may I have a motion to approve the curriculum and instruction items, B1 through B2?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Uh, is there any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Flowers, please take the role.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Vera?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next, may I have a motion to approve the finance items, C, special services, item A1 through 3, and business office items, B1 through 29?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Uh, is there any discussion on these items, including the budget? Would you like to continue, Mr. Stevenson?
Well, you know, look, the budget vote is the most important vote that board members take. Right? Because again, it affects those three constituencies that I mentioned earlier. Students, taxpayers, employees. Uh, and I think oftentimes there is not, uh, a context that takes the merger, the confluence of those three constituencies in a way where everyone is satisfied to the decisions that a superintendent has to make and his recommendations to the board. And we have had budget presentations in the past where, uh, members of the community come and talk about the perpetual increase in tax levy year over year. And we take those comments seriously. Uh, so this is not a, uh, a situation where this board, I believe, uh, not speaking for my, for my colleagues, but seeing the work and the attention that they give to the recommendations of the superintendent, this is not something that is taken lightly. The 2.77% tax levy to the taxpayers in West Orange is the fourth highest tax levy in the last 10 years. And so if Mr. Rock is correct in his analysis of state aid, if the analysis is that, uh, we're in a situation where the situation remains the same next year, I don't need to indicate to the community, it's, it's, it's self-evident based on Mr. Rock's presentation and based on a $35 million swing that we may possibly be in the same position next year. And that's simply the reality of it. Uh, and I think the community has to be aware of it and the community has to begin to ask itself, uh, in those competing, but should not be competing constituencies of employees, uh, students and taxpayers, what is our threshold as a community? And that's a, that's a real question. And so, uh, for me, we take those recommendations from the superintendent very seriously. Uh, we hope that there is a fix to the state aid formula that benefits West Orange and allows us to deliver the high-quality education that we all hope and aspire to. That there is state aid to preserve the, 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 the jobs of those who work in our district and contribute their, their time, talent and treasure to our community. We hope that there is, is aid to, uh, deliver the aspirational programs that continue to, uh, we, we saw those students present tonight and other communities can talk about diversity and talk about their presentation of it. We live it. Those student presentations today were indicative of that. This is a phenomenal community with phenomenal schools. Uh, and we are striving at, I believe as a board, particularly under Mr. Moore's leadership, to ensure that our students get what they need. The board is conscious. Mr. Moore is conscious. We have rolled out under, uh, this administration and the prior administration, a new math curriculum at the, at the elementary school level, a new ELA curriculum. And there has been, uh, the resources put forward to that to support student achievement. And I think we all, again, were very shocked by what we saw, but we also have to deal, as Mr. Moore said, those who envy his position, uh, can envy it all day. He lives in the reality of it and has to make hard decisions, uh, that really give to all of those constituencies in a way that helps, uh, preserve the academics and the education that our kids deserve. Helps to protect the taxpayer who wants to see that we're being fiscally responsible and also too looks at those who we've invited into our community to serve our children that, uh, their jobs will not be in peril because there is instability, uh, and a lack of consistency with, with state aid. That's a lot to, as, as a taxpayer, I'm speaking out as a, as a taxpayer now, as a board member, that would be a lot for anyone to undertake year after year. And so, uh, hopefully it's better next year, but I'm honest enough to say, as a parent of two children enrolled in our schools, as a, as a taxpayer in this community and as a elected member of this board of education, that, uh, I understand that there very much may be a reckoning that we all may have to face and face it head on with decisions which will not be popular and decisions which, uh, this board will ha-, will ha-, will have to look at in a way that, uh, helps support our children, helps support, uh, and defend the decisions of the taxpayer and also too helps maintain, uh, the ransom of our teachers and administrators so that they can do their jobs in a manner which serves our children.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Any other comments? Ms. Vera?
Just want to go back to something Mr. Stevenson said earlier, that this is not a aspirational budget. You, you won't find aspirational things in there. I want to rewind the clock a little bit to January because we, we started this budget process before we got the news about the state aid. And at that point, our first budget meeting was aspirational and we met with Mr. Moore, we met with, um, Ms. Flowers and they said, we, we met with the administration, we met with, uh, the leadership and then people throughout the district and said, here's what we need. Now it's going to cost this and we don't know that we can afford all of it, but these are the things that we need to, to do better for our students and to be aspirational. And we're like, okay, great. Hopefully state aid will come, we'll get some increase because of the last few years we've got that. Maybe we'll have to whittle that list down, but we anticipated being able to get some of those things, right? The news that we got in February essentially switched us from that paradigm of an aspirational budget to one where we're trying to balance a budget. A few years ago before I was on the board, I remember one of these budget hearings, Mr. Rothstein, my predecessors on the board, made an observation. And he was looking over the last 10 years of, of increases to the tax levy, said, you know, we go up and we go down, but we all kind of always kind of hit this 2%, but the costs always seemed to go higher than that. You know, how is it that we actually balance this budget? And he made the observation that every so often, some kind of Deus ex machina came along and wow, here's some money. You know, first, if you go back a ways, it was chapter 78 and public school employees started to contribute a certain amount of their salary back to the district to pay for their benefits. And that plowed money into the district for budget for a couple of years and that supplanted the 2% increase to make it balanceable. And then the state started to fund the school funding formula, right? It, it made this formula in 2007. For a long time, we didn't get any money or very little of it. And then wow, here's 5 million this year. Here's 10 million this year. And the first two years that Mr. Stevens and I were on this board, it's like, great, we can just get everything we need. And then the federal government came along with Esser and said, here's more money, right? All these things came along. All these things came along and these are the ways for the last 10 years that budgets have been balanced. We always knew that at some point that would dry up and then things would get tougher. We didn't expect it to be this year. So, so we kind of knew that in the future, there would be tough decisions to be made. You know, once we found out that we'd have to make some of those this year, we looked at Mr. Moore's leadership to try to find the best way to balance all the priorities that we had. And that is to maintain the best schools that we have for our students, to look to the long-term future of this district, which includes our facilities. A couple of meetings ago, we had the architect come and there was a laundry list of things that need to be fixed. Things you can't push down the road like a roof. And if the roof caves in and it starts leaking, you got a problem. Things like a boiler. The boiler stops working because we don't pay for that. Well, we got a problem and we have no heat. You know, you only have to look next door to Montclair to see what happens when you don't pay for facilities upgrades because the stairwell in their high school collapsed a few years ago, right? We could take the short-term solution, take that facility's money, put it into salaries and benefits to preserve those 24 positions, or some version of them. But that's irresponsible, right? It's just kicking the can down the road and saying, you know, we're going to bet the future of our schools and our students on the hope that we get money somewhere down the line, knowing full well that it's probably not going to get all that much better, at least not so much better that we can afford $200 million in facilities upgrades. So the, the budget that Mr. Moore has presented that does a fine job, I think, of balancing what we need to do. You know, it's unfortunate and disappointing that we have to eliminate some positions, but I, I think they've done a good job of spreading that out as best they can throughout the district. But yes, we're losing one media specialist, but we're not losing a person, right? It's a, a loss through attrition and we're able to spread around the, the resources that we have to ensure that all students have access to libraries while they're in middle school. And we're losing a position here, a position there, but we're not gutting any particular department or placing undue emphasis on any, any one piece of our academic program. Now, maybe next year we get good news and the state says, here's more money and we can fix some of these things or be aspirational again. But, but we have to make a choice today to, to balance a budget that can see us through next year and put us in a position the year after and the year after and the year after that. Because I won't be here forever, but I know that Mr. Moore will be here for some time. Some of you have long careers ahead of you and you will be here for some time and we have to look to that future instead of just looking to tomorrow. So with that, I support this budget. If there's any other comments, we'll take those from the board.
Just very briefly, last year, my first year on the board, I voted against the budget. I think we lost, I know we lost three to two. This year I'm supporting it. I don't like it. It's, there's a lot to not like, obviously. But the process is different this year. It's more open. It's, you know, more, I want to say, I don't want to say combative, but back and forth in a good way. And I feel like I can honestly say that everything is being done, of course, to protect and support our students and our teachers. When we go to visit the schools every month, I, I just fall in love with these teachers every time. But we also have a responsibility to the people who live in town. And last year I felt we did not do a service to them. It was a disservice, I felt, the process that we had in terms of passing that budget. But this year is different, so I don't like it. I'm not going to go through all the reasons I don't like it. A lot of them were said tonight, but a, a, at some point we have to, number one, bite the bullet and number two, we brought in Mr. Moore for a reason because we have confidence in him. I think he's done a tremendous job on this budget and I support him. I support the budget. And we'll hope that we get some friends in Trenton next year to do the right thing. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, Ms. Flowers, please take the role.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Vera?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next, may I have a motion to approve reports, item D1?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Ms. Vera?
Second.
Vice President Vera, second then. Sorry, Mr. Uh, any discussion? All right. Hearing none. Ms. Flowers, please take the role call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Ifker?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Vera?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. That wraps up our work on resolutions. Thank you very much to all my board colleagues. Next up, we will have petitions and hearings of citizens for any agenda or non-agenda items that you wish to discuss. You will have three minutes to speak. Please approach the podium at this time and state your name and address for the record.
Teresa Nyro, Hazel Avenue School. And I will say, I was watching this from home, Madison, New Jersey. Got it in my car, snatched my hair back, put the dog in the kennel and went screaming from my house, telling my husband, I'm leaving. He thought I was divorcing him, but that's not what I was doing. No. It's true. At the April 15th board meeting, and mind you, this was sudden. We are all still reeling from it. I can hear my colleagues during their lunchtime calling their doctors. I will focus on Express Scripts, the new prescription plan, and will refer to them as ES going forward. The 2024 formulary drug list provided by ES quote states, quote, "Inclusion list does not guarantee coverage." What does that mean? This is our list. This is what we cover. But there's no guarantee you will get coverage. Okay? ES has numerous complaints filed with the Better Business Bureau. Bureau, it has a C-plus rating, Benacart had A-minus. With an alert message. Alerts scare me. They are advising consumers to use caution when considering doing business with ES due to the following allegations. And my colleague already stated these allegations, but I'm going to repeat them again. Delays or failure to ship correct prescriptions or medications. Failure to accept returns or medications which were shipped in error. Failure to issue refunds. Debiting credit or debit cards for prescriptions not shipped. And poor customer service. On consumeraffairs.com, 93% of 3,755 reviews are negative receiving one to two stars. 93% of 3,755 is a pattern. Not a few disgruntled customers. These reviews are from veterans, police officers, the elderly and parents trying to get medication for their children. Many of these medications are life-saving medications. Please look it up. Where's the doctor on the board? They also refuse to listen to doctors. A doctor actually said that those pharmacists are bold-faced liars because they claim they can't, they claim they can't get a hold of the doctor. What a shame. Here are a few reviews. Heaven, quote, and I apologize. How is this company still in business? Do they simply run the cheapest, lowest quality possible prescription mail over?
Ma'am, your time has expired. I'm asking you to wrap up.
Yeah, I'm going to wrap up.
In a sentence or two, please.
In a sentence. That appears to run on foreign call centers and robo calls and win the lowest bid from companies that wish to spend as little as possible on employees' prescription benefit plans. So my last thing I'm going to say, which I have a lot more and I'll be back at the next meeting because I made a mistake. I was a coward. Tonight I was a coward and I've never been a coward in my life.
All right. Thank you. We'll, we'll see you at the next meeting, but your time has expired. Is there anyone else for public comment? Uh, seeing none? Sorry. Take your time. It's okay.
Anne Ali Ahmed, 63 Woodland Avenue. I just want to say thank you all. Thank you all for bringing Connie back to as the Director of Student Support Services. I like homegrown. I know Connie didn't grow up in West Orange, but she's West Orange. And I truly, truly appreciate it that you put Student Support Services back in capable hands. Christian Gogody, thank God she's still with our district. She's a gem. Dawn Riberro, I say this because I have six children. Mr. Moore helped raise my six children with me because my husband traveled a lot. They're all grown and accomplished adults, all with IEP, all with Student Support Services. So Student Support Services, that's my home. That's my home and I thank you for making it secure. And Hayden, you got, I got your back no matter what. Okay? I know this budget, it wasn't easy. It was put in your lap. And I think you're handling it. All of you have handled it as best as you can. I really do hope though, you reconsider about the librarians because books are knowledge. We all know that. And especially with special education students, they like to go in, into a library and the librarian, talk to them and show them new things. Please, if you could just reconsider keeping the librarians and maybe cutting, I'm not going to say what you should cut. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Good night now.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Our next board meeting will be held at 6:30 PM on June 17th, 2024. The meeting will be held in the West Orange High School Library Media Center. We will not be going into executive session after the close of this meeting. There will be no further business discussed and no additional action will be taken. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ripker. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our meeting is now adjourned. We wish you a good night.